We will start with the pledge.
(inaudible).
Okay.
(inaudible).
(inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). (inaudible). Okay, we will start with public comment, as always.
(inaudible). Stan, for 43 Stone, Cleveland Road. I just, this is the Mike Hale comment, right? I think he's going to be a wonderful addition to the Cable Access and Media Board. I think he's going to do a wonderful job. But I'm reminded, and I know you're all aware of this, but there's going to be some funding issues that our cable access station is going to have to face in the near future. And I know you all know about that, and I think there's some creativity that we might all bring to that, how to help continue the wonderful services that they provided our community. You know, it's just been a great thing for us. So we just have to help them with the funding, and it may be fundraisers or something, whatever it is, but I know you're aware of that. And, you know, maybe some of our own town money might be contributed to the effort as we go along here. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate that on your radar. So just, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful activity, and I know we all want to keep it going the way it's been going, so that's great.
(inaudible) I know that we don't normally engage back and forth, but just to clarify, why is there going to be a funding issue, though?
Well, the FCC is changing the funding model. The way that all cable access stations in the United States have received their money has been as a surcharge on all the cable fees. And now the cable companies have convinced them, the FCC, that they can substitute in-kind contributions for actual cash dispersments. So that means that, well, we give you the free channel, so that's worth x hundreds of thousands of dollars, and now we don't have to pay you anymore for that. So that's been the change in the funding model, and so now they're not going to be getting the same level of money from the two cable channels in our town. And so that's going to have a significant impact on their revenue, and they're going to have to start to think about how to supplant that. They'll still get something, but they won't get what they've gotten in the past, so that's going to be an issue.
I completely agree.
I think as a side note, not for you, Stan, but just for us as a board, we should have regular interaction with our appointee to this committee on that particular point, because I think that is going to absolutely get more critical.
Absolutely.
And we have, we've had a long touch with that committee for, since I've been on the board, and I think we probably need to shorten that a little bit so that we have a better understanding and can offer insights and help to that point.
And I think encouragement, too, for them to, you know, be more proactive about looking for money.
Yeah.
You know, they, they've never had to do any fundraising to speak of, and, you know, many, you know, I mean, we see it all the time on, you know, PBS. I mean, they're constantly fundraising, and they have to do that. So they, there are lots of people that know how to do that and do it all the time. They just have had the luxury of not having to do that. And, as you all know, they moved out of a no-rent environment that they've been in all this time to now where they're paying rent. Wonderful place, and it's well worth the money that they're paying, but that's a change, too, in their model. So their revenues are going down and their expenses are going up, so, you know, it's a challenge.
(inaudible).
We can, we can figure, we can figure it out, but just, I think your point's well taken.
Yeah.
Some regular monitoring isn't a bad thing.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. I wanted to thank you especially, also, Stan, for your service on the committee. I know you stepped in in a pinch for us, and we kind of appointed you mid-cycle, and we really appreciate you stepping into that role and helping.
(inaudible). Everything seems to sort of get back on track.
Yeah. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, board reorganization.
Madam Chair.
It's been a pleasure being the chair, everyone.
I just, you, you have been chair during a very, very tumultuous time, and I, I'm tripping over myself because I just think you've done an amazing job, and you've done an amazing job.
And I'll second that. You're leaving some huge shoes to fill. You've done a tremendous job.
Thank you.
Right from the beginning.
I very much enjoyed the experience, and I learned a lot, and I thank everyone for their patience, and all of you and everyone else with me learning.
But you're not going anywhere.
No.
Just want to double check.
No, no, no. But it was, it was weird coming tonight, thinking this is my last meeting as chair, because it was, it was an experience.
It's been a long, you did, the gas crisis, you helped as, as our chair us navigate that very tumultuous, until tumultuous experience. You went through a special town meeting, a town manager search. While we did that special town meeting, we lost our community development director during that same time. You managed to somehow put in all these hours and still have a grasp of every single issue that I think I spoke to you about. I mean, it was always like, oh, you've already done all your homework. And I, I really don't know. I don't know how, how we could have done the past, especially the past few months without, without you.
Thanks.
I'd like to say that it was great working with you as a chair, because I have struggled myself in this position, as you know.
We learn together.
We both were kind of, but in a very tough time, so it was a pleasure of mine, and I enjoyed working with you in this capacity, and look forward to working with you in other capacities, too, as the board, but it was really great.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
And smiling through, really, as much of it as you could, and with a good, good spirit to all, which I think is the other part of it, which is, it's not just the results, but how you feel about it. And I think you helped project a calmness and a consistency, a warm feeling about it all, so thank you.
Thanks, guys, thank you.
She earned her $500.
Exactly. There you go.
And that's all, really.
What'd you do with all that?
Babysitters and pizza.
Yeah, that's probably about it.
Okay, so.
Madam Chair, I nominate our colleague, Richard Valencourt, as our next chair.
I'll second that.
Absolutely.
I think you would be a great one.
Yeah.
Like I said, big shoes to fill, but, you know, really big shoes to fill, and I know I'm not going to be able to do it, but I'll give my shot.
Kind of goes the other way. Your shoes are bigger than hers.
Well.
Hers look nicer, though, Dick, so.
No, her shoes are bigger to fill than mine, that's for sure, in this role. So, yeah, I will accept that nomination.
Wonderful. All in favor?
Aye.
Great.
Madam Chair, I nominate Rose Marie Smedili as the Clerk of the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Accept?
I accept.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate, because I think you wear the title well, I'd like to nominate you for Licensing Chair.
I'll second that.
All right. All accept? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Kind of had to call for your own vote. Have to vote for yourself.
Right, I was like, wait.
Good night.
No, Regina gets to finish out tonight's meeting, doesn't she?
Are you going to take over the meeting?
We usually do, yeah, often.
Wow, just tossed aside.
No, I have no problem with this all taking effect on our next meeting.
All right, fair enough.
Yeah, we didn't really discuss the order of things. I didn't think about that, but, okay.
Normally, we do it effective the next meeting, right?
Yeah, it's usually at the end, and it is the passing of the gavel at the end of the evening.
I'll ceremoniously pass it to you at the end.
All right. Okay, and then, do we already call for the vote for licensing? Yes, so Madam Chair, I will motion Phil DeColigiero and Chris Nobley as the Appointment Subcommittee Members.
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Great. We have a new organization for our next meeting. Okay, then we have the approval of our minutes from the June 24th Executive Session and Open Session. I want you to check to read those.
Madam Chair, I move that the Board of Selectmen approve the open session minutes of June 24th, 2019, as presented. And within the same motion, I move that we approve the Executive Session minutes of June 24th, 2019, as presented.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Okay, now we have the vote to sign a contract between the town and incoming town manager, Melissa Murphy Rodriguez. For the public's knowledge, we discussed this in our executive session, I guess, and voted on it, and now I'll, I'll share a few words. So Selectmen Smedili and I were the sub-appointment committee. We thank you for entrusting us to the, sub-appointment, sorry, negotiation subcommittee. So thank you for entrusting us with that responsibility. I think we felt we had a really great negotiation with Ms. Murphy Rodriguez, and feel like we reached a deal that's a great deal for both parties. To provide a very brief one-liner, I would say it is a lateral move for Melissa. She's got a total compensation package that is lateral, consistent with her current compensation, broken up a little bit differently because North Annover doesn't offer certain aspects that she was receiving in Sudbury. But for the record, I will say that it is, the salary is $194 base. I see Paul with his, with his earphone. $194 base compensation. I'll give you a copy of the contract, Paul. $6,000 in a car allowance and $13,000 in deferred compensation. So that is a total of $213,000 total compensation package. And I think, I don't know, I could go into other details, and this will be posted, obviously it's public documents, so I don't really need to go into much more. I'm sure that's what everyone's interested in hearing, but I think, I thank Melissa for her, you know, great working with us, great attitude and position in working with us. I think we arrived at something that we think is a great deal for the town and a great deal for Melissa, considering she's getting a nicer commute, perhaps, but we really appreciate the flexibility, and hopefully we achieve something that, that everyone can be really happy with.
It actually was a pleasure working with Melissa, and we started off the conversation on, you know, what, what was important to her, and a lot of it was the commute and her family, and I think a lot of us really like to hear that. It's a nice thing. And it was a really, it was a very open and, you know, sharing experiences to what's important for you, what's important for us, and it was, I think we put a really nice deal together for everybody. And again, thank you for your cooperation and open-mindedness to some different ideas, and I think it's a really good contract.
You guys did a good job. Thank you both for doing this, and.
You're welcome.
Okay, so, do we have a motion?
Madam Chair, I will move that the Board of Selectmen approve and sign a contract between the town and Melissa Murphy Rodriguez.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Wonderful.
You're welcome.
I guess the other point that I know, ooh, you turned up the audio. I know the other point that Paul's probably going to ask about is, when will you start? So I will go ahead and say that Melissa has a 90-day notice period in her current contract. I think she's going to, you know, obviously, based on this vote, submit a resignation and have discussion with her board, and we're hopeful that she'll be starting in September if everything goes well with her board. So that's what we're aiming towards, and we'll leave it at that until we get confirmation from, from her current employer. So, I think that's it. Anything else that I forgot to mention?
No, so it's the next process that we sign here this evening, and.
We have two copies, so we'll sign that. And, yeah, I guess, oh, well, maybe we can move to the next couple of items and then sign, because we really have hardly anything on the agenda left. So do we have the reappointments memorandum?
I, what you want, I have.
I usually have my computer. I didn't bring it up because I forgot.
Are you looking for the list?
The list?
Did you, somebody, I have the list. Yeah, sorry, I usually have my computer. I just didn't do it, so.
Usually we just.
I know we usually just move them all, but I was just curious, like, did you guys meet with?
We reached out to all of them. Time didn't allow us to meet with everyone, but we did reach out and got everyone's intent, that people wanted to be reappointed.
And it, and as you've probably seen in the past week, there are a number of folks that contacted Lori requesting not to, not for reappointment or resignation, I think, as it were.
So the list reflects all those that wanted to be reappointed. Some of them we didn't, well, not too many of them that we met with, but these reflect all those that want to be reappointed.
Okay.
And I would think after this is done, our next step would be go back and reevaluate what openings we have, you know, because there were folks who didn't want to be reappointed, so we're going to have some board openings. We have, you know, a pretty strong list of candidates that have been interviewed and waiting to go back, you know, waiting to get appointed to a board, so I think we need to assess what we have left open, and then go back and look at who we've got for candidates.
Sounds like our work's cut out for us, Phil.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I, I guess that's why I wanted to look at the list, because I knew we'd, we'd gotten a lot of resignations and stuff, so.
In some ways, it, some of the things have kind of created balance, and then in others, you know, we've got a number of openings, so.
Right.
Subject for our next discussion, next meeting.
Okay. So do we have a motion?
Yeah, move that the Board of Selectmen approve the reappointments as listed in the memorandum from Lori Burzloff dated July 8th, 2019.
I'll second that.
Okay, I guess we already had the discussion, so these are all folks who want it to be reappointed, so it's great, and we will commence, I'm sure, advertising open appointments.
(inaudible). Yes. Yep, and then Lori.
Yes.
Okay, so is it going to be contingent on the emergency management issue?
Oh, the.
Oh, yeah.
They've got to have the quarry report.
They really should have that.
So can we issue a letter to them?
We have.
Yeah, and give them a timeframe, maybe, to respond.
We did.
Yes.
So are you suggesting that hasn't been a response at this point? Or have there still, are there still some outstanding, or have they, we've gotten some back, or are there, there's, we've got nothing left?
There were some questions, and I believe they've all been answered, but I have not heard that since the last time we reached out, which was probably a week and a half ago. I mean, I know the chair is, was busy with the whole Fourth of July thing, so.
So will you just follow up with that?
Yep, I just wanted to make sure that it was contingent upon.
Yeah, so let's make, make that contingent upon, just for everyone's reminder, the emergency management group we, we voted should be subject to a quarry background check because they have access to so much.
People's homes.
Yeah, people's homes, and so much personal information, and I guess all that really became clear during that Columbia gas disaster.
Yeah, staffing, staffing the shelters and such.
Yeah, exactly. So, okay, can we mind if, make a motion to, an amendment to the motion subject to those, who made the motion?
I'll just amend it that all the appointments to the emergency management agency be subject to confirmation, acceptable confirmation of a quarry return, quarry report.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. And then the next item is the appointment of Mike Hale to the Cable Advisory Board, as we mentioned a bit earlier.
Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the appointment of Mike Hale to the Cable Advisory Board through June 30th, 2022.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
So, yeah, we, we interviewed Mike. Chris and I interviewed Mike, and very strong candidate. He's actually in the cable industry. What does he work for CNN, was it CNN, or?
Discovery.
No, Discovery. He works for Discovery Channel. He had a lot of involvement in his local cable access when he, growing up, so he's a really, was a really strong candidate and had a real strong interest in being on this board, so I think it was a really good fit.
Perfect. Great. Thank you to Mike for stepping up. Okay, so all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay. And then lastly, I would just say, related to the Stevens estate, I know there's been some, you know, discussion since our town meeting about the Stevens estate, and I was actually going to put an item on the agenda to discuss kind of next steps where we go forward, and I just lost track of time and the agenda being posted, so I'll request that the next chair perhaps include that in a future, you know, next meeting agenda to kind of discuss.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, that's tops, one of the tops on the list.
How we go forward with the Stevens estate, so. Apologies for not getting that on our agenda tonight, I'm just busy with other things that somehow slipped, slipped getting on the agenda. All right, I think that's it, unless there's.
Yeah, can I just bring up one thing about the next meeting? So we got a meeting scheduled for next week. I forget why we didn't skip a week. If it was because of me, then my calendar's now clear.
So we were originally going to meet next week and the 29th, and then we weren't meeting this week. But then we put the meeting this week because we wanted to do the contract, and we wanted to sign it as soon as possible. We don't want to wait another week.
Yeah, makes sense.
So we could either cancel next week, no, we can't cancel next week.
No, because I need to have the meeting for you to sign my year-end budget transfers to cover any of the deficits. It has to be done by the 15th of March.
Okay.
And I don't have it prepared for today because we're not finished closing up the year.
But that means we don't have to have the one at the end of the month, is that what we're saying?
Well, that was the question, because we talked about canceling the 29th meeting. I never know to ask you guys about that tonight.
Okay.
Because I wasn't sure whether it was or not.
Right.
I thought we talked about it the last meeting, but.
Yeah.
I would like to cancel.
So we're going to cancel the 29th.
All in favor of canceling the 29th? It's my last.
So your next meeting after the 15th will be August 12th.
August what?
12th.
Oh.
Vacation.
Is that allowed?
There's usually only one meeting in July.
Yeah.
It's just, the whole year's been a busy schedule.
August 12th, okay. And then we would meet again on the 26th. We have two meetings in August.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, does that work for everyone?
That's actually better.
Yeah, all right.
Madam Chair, I'd like to just give a little piece of information about tomorrow. We are having that press conference at, over at Rosen Dov. It's the press conference for the new marketing campaign for the region, for the disaster that's helping the businesses to recover. It's an additional marketing campaign that's been sent out as of July 1st. I actually, over the weekend, saw it on one of the buses going by in April, so it was right on the side, big and, big and bright. I mean, if you didn't know about it, you wouldn't know what it meant, but it does stand out, so. But the press conference tomorrow is with the mayor from Lawrence, town manager from Andover, myself, as well as the, you know, a couple state and federal officials will be there as well with the 10 o'clock over at Rosen Dov.
Tomorrow morning.
Tomorrow morning. Yep.
Great, okay. Great. Any other announcements? I guess we'll go through the Selectmen updates, comments, announcements, whatever. Anything else?
Other than great job for the Fourth of July, great fireworks.
Yeah.
I mean, they just do.
They're really amazing.
They are really amazing, but it, again, it's the same group that works for months in preparation for all of these wonderful festivals, so that, and they work it so that the rest of us can enjoy it with our families. And thank you again to the Festival Committee. I mean, can't say enough.
Yeah, I agree.
And they're really good about keeping the weather in check, too.
And the Booster Club running the race.
Yes.
I didn't get the numbers this year. Did anybody know how many, how many runners they have this year, or?
I heard there were about 800. I don't, I don't know if the number.
That's great.
Great events for you to bring your daughters to.
Yeah, lots of fun stuff.
Pie eating contest. Take out the reigning champ, blockery, young blockery.
Okay, I guess we're going to.
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Over. It's over.